Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 16th regular board meeting. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Before we have roll call, I would like to point out that there are some changes to the agenda based on the bylaw that we approved at our June meeting. They will be reflected in the executive session primarily and during the public comment portion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Eastwood.
Here.
Ms. Pavlik.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Parkers.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 25th special meeting.
I'll second.
Are there any comments, questions, changes to those minutes? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any additions, removals, or modifications to the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sable.
Two, I think fairly quick items for discussion tonight. The first is, it's already that time of year for start thinking about OSBA conference. The conference is from November 11th through the 13th. Noreen, the Board Secretary will be working on scheduling OSBA. I know I've already heard from some of you, and Noreen is probably very soon, within the next several weeks, going to send out a questionnaire just as to whether you intend to attend this year. So please keep your eyes open for that, and I wanted to make sure you got these dates on your calendar. The second item of discussion is potentially scheduling a special meeting for the purposes of personnel. That would be the only item. We're in the meat of our hiring. I do, per board policy, have authority to go ahead and have employees start, but if at all possible, I'd prefer for them to be officially board-approved. So I'm suggesting a potential meeting on July 30th, which is in two weeks, Monday after next. I don't know for certain at this time that we will definitely need that meeting, but I want to be prepared and have the time blocked off just in case we do. Because it's a special meeting, it would only be for personnel issues. We don't necessarily have to have it at the 6:30 time. We could schedule that for a time that works best for the board. I would imagine it would be a 10-minute meeting.
Mr. Sable, I know I'm out of town on that particular day, so just for quorum purposes, just to...
Why don't I send out an email? I know the morning doesn't work with some potential times, and then you all can give me the thumbs up and the thumbs down, and we'll get it coordinated. And I'll let you know for sure, as we work through personnel, whether we're going to need that meeting or not. But I know Jim Shaking said we're going to. I know they've been very busy in human resources the past several weeks. Thank you.
The district bank balance was down by $5.6 million in June, down to $78 million overall. This is because we get very little money in June. We only get the foundation funds, and that's roughly $1 million out of the balance. This, though, is above last year by $5.5 million. So that's a good thing for the district. We ended well. The general fund revenues were above last June by $43,000. The general fund expenditures were above last June by $732,000. Benefits, supplies, capital, and other funding accounted for this increase. Our sales tax fund, the balance is $3.368 million. District spent $507,000 roughly in June, and the interest payment for the COPS billing was the major portion of the $507,000. Districts received $90,000 in June for investment purposes and brings our investment balance to $1.054 million. This amount is $32,000 below the total collected in fiscal years 16 and 17. This is also the first time the district has exceeded the million-dollar mark since 2008. So we're happy with our investments and where they're going. A lot of that is due to the government increasing the rates on our CDs and on our treasuries, so we're looking good with that. Dealing with our investments. I was asked to talk a little bit about our investments here. There's three main tenants to our investment. The first is safety of principal. We don't want to go ahead and invest in things that aren't safe for anybody, really. And we're very limited by the state in what we can invest in, so that deals with the safety of principal. Our second tenant is liquidity. We look to have monies available so we don't have to go ahead and turn investments in early and lose monies. And finally is the return on investment. So if we go in that order, the return on investment is the least amount that we're worried about. But we try and get a good return as we can. Our policy, well, school district policies, not just our policy, school district policies, we can only invest in certain items. Treasury bonds, treasury notes, and certificates of deposit. We can only invest for five years at the most. Star Ohio, which is the state treasurer's bank, basically, they invest in a lot of CDs, they invest in a lot of commercial paper, and they allow us to go ahead and submit monies to them. And of the first four that I've noted, Star Ohio, we could get monies out on a daily basis without any loss of principal. We also could invest in repurchase of agreements. Those could be overnight or up to a maximum of 30 days. Commercial paper, which could be a maximum of 270 days, and banker's acceptance, which is 180 days. So our investment abilities are like driving in a Porsche on the freeway that's wide open. You want to go ahead and just kick it down and lean back and enjoy the ride, but we're doing 25 miles per hour in the highway. So that's how much we're limited, but breaking the million-dollar mark was a good thing for the district this year, and hopefully we could, you know, keep the investments rolling. And we know that the feds are looking at increasing the basis points by another 25 basis points at least once before December, and at least, I believe, they're looking another two or three times next year. So, questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that.
Ms. Parkers, I just wanted to let everybody know that due to scheduling conflicts, vacations, the Finance Committee and the Curriculum Committee did not meet this month of July.
And the Facilities Committee rescheduled the meeting, so we'll be meeting this Wednesday, usually 8 o'clock at the board offices. Lot of projects going on, and this is the time of year where, you know, you get into it, and then sometimes you find some other stuff out along the way, so we're working through some of that. But I think everything is going well, and John has a good handle on that. Also, outside of the committee aspect, I just, I got, had some exposure to some of the community groups who are working with our young people in the community. It's not directly through the school or anything else, but they're like a mentoring program. And I'm just encouraged at how much that is available in Medina. This particular group took a group of students and their parents to the State House. Senator Avoff invited them down. They got to go and experience what that's like. I believe they got to go over to Ohio State. So they're not the only group doing that in the community, and that's what I want to, I want to put a shout-out to everybody who commits their time and resources to help other people in the community. It happens. It's going on here in Medina, and I just really appreciate for those people who are working in that direction.
Thank you. Our Policy Committee will meet in August. We didn't meet in July. And then you all received your minutes for the MCRC, our last meeting. The next meeting for the REC Center will also be in August, August 16th.
Okay, thank you. I know it has been exciting to drive around and see work happening over at the tennis courts and over at Root, and the pictures on Twitter of the Claggett Media Center, those changes are happening, so I'm really excited to see that when that's all completed. Thank you for your updates.
If it please, the board, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the June 2018 Treasurer's Report. It is also item number two. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised temporary appropriations for 1819. You see revisions in here, what you approved in May, and then, again, what we're looking at now. You see a little bit of an increase in the general fund. We got a few more budgets in. You'll see the main increases in your other grants, I'm sorry, your public school support. We had, actually, the high school give us more valid numbers, so you see those decrease. And I believe we also increased our benefits based on what we ended the year with. What we were looking at with the 8.2 was last year's figures. We ended the year at roughly $9.9 million out of the benefits account. Also, the workers' compensation, this was the first year that I've had to increase the workers' compensation. This past year was a number of hits for the district, so... Questions? Thank you.
Hey, Dave. Just regarding the benefit packages, and that's, is that because of the usage of various items that we're tapping into, so rates are increasing, or what falls into that?
Well, I believe that Valerie was asking that as well. What happened this year, the retirements were based on figures that were provided to the state last April. So April, not of this year, April of '17. And they use those figures and take those monies out over 24 payments in the foundation. So the estimates last April, and I told you this before, the estimates were off, so they'll be truing up this year for us. But the rest of those, the workers' comp, we've used more. I forgot to talk about the auxiliary services and the title accounts. They were approved here in July 1st, so we were able to get those on there. But as far as the benefits, we were fine. There was no more use, per se, because the health insurance wasn't that high, but the retirement was based on a number of April of '17. Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Treasurer's action items.
I'll second.
Are there any other additional questions or comments regarding these items? Hearing none.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you.
First up, we have donations for this evening. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education accept the following donations to the Medina City Schools. Again, as seems to be the case monthly, we have a pretty sizable donation from North PTO to help pay for field trips for our students for the upcoming school year. In addition, we also have a donation of $1,000 to the Medina City School District Hall of Fame from Jean Pritchard. I do want to point out that the foundation is in the process of adjusting the wall of fame that's outside the pack in a similar fashion to what the athletic wall is currently going through. So we're trying to do that at no cost to the district. We're not trying to, we're going to do that at no cost to the district. We already have a commitment of two different donations, which covers the bulk of the cost. This is one of them. The foundation is picking up the remainder of the cost. I do want to point out that as that process is occurring, those plaques will start being pulled from the wall, just like they were with athletics, so they can be scanned and placed into the system. Number two, it is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following textbook for adoption. Again, these were presented to the board by Tina Cassidy, our Director of Instruction, at last month's meeting. So they've been sitting for public review and are ready for adoption pending your approval. That is the same case with item number three, new addition to the secondary book list. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the following books to add to the secondary book list, and these books are for whole-class reads for the grade levels, as noted. We also have an annual field trip that's going to be occurring in August for students to attend Camp Cheer, which is down in Mason, Ohio, and that is an overnight field trip. Number five, Blackboard. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the renewal of the agreement between Blackboard and the Medina City School District for the website, mass notification, mobile app, and social media accounts at an annual cost of $32,224.38, commencing on July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. A three-year agreement was reached when we first redid the website. This is year two of that three-year agreement, so this is no increase from the costs of the previous year. We do have one more year next year, the following year, which will be year three, and then we'll have to renegotiate this contract. I do want to emphasize what I've already said, that this contract is specific for the website as well as the reverse call system. This is not our student management system that parents log into. That's separate. Participation agreement. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the district's participation in the Title III Limited English Proficient Consortium through the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, formerly known as the Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County, to receive our allocation of the $7,483.53 for the 1819 school year. This was presented to the board and approved last year as well. This is because we have a lower population of limited English proficient students. Thus, we're under the $10,000 threshold, so we are required to involve ourselves in a consortium. And the consortium that we have been with the past several years has been with the Cuyahoga County, the Northeast Ohio ESC.
I just got a quick question about that. Is it, you know, with the language services, is it more of a tutorial type where it's working with students to get them, you know, if we're pretty much teaching in English, I would think here for the most part, unless it's a language course? Is that the goal with that, or does that, does that service kind of go with them all the way through if they need it? I guess, I just am kind of curious how that works.
Yeah, there's actually two parts of it. This consortium is specifically so we can collaborate with other districts and receive our funds instead of receiving no funds at all. Our English as a Second Language, our Limited English Proficient, it used to be ESL, we actually contract with the Medina County ESC for services. So services don't necessarily last forever. Students are actually required to take a test. Once they pass that state test, they can move out of the English as a Second Language program. Also, in the past, I've experienced some parents who have elected for their children not to participate in the program, so we cannot force them to, but we have to make sure that services are available. One thing to keep an eye on is although our Limited English Proficient population is fairly low, it's actually been growing the last several years. And one of the things that we're going to continue to explore is whether we should offer those services directly in the district rather than contracting them out, and that's just weighing the cost versus benefit. If we get enough students, it would be to our benefit to just offer it internally, but currently with the enrollment, it's not. Number seven, service agreements for the 2018-2019 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following service agreements for the 1819 school year. All of these agreements are per individual students, IEPs. They, again, a similar situation to the LEP, where it actually saves us money to outsource these services. It would cost us more money if we were to provide these on our own. One item I do want to note, the Cleveland Clinic Center for Autism. We did make an adjustment to the contract sheet today, and the reason why is because the original sheet showed a 7% increase in the cost of this contract. Upon further research, we found that it's not a 7% increase, it's a 2% increase, which is the average for these types of contracts. The overall amount showed a 7% increase because the students did not attend the entire year last year, so it was a shorter contract.
Erin, I have a quick question on that. With those students on the IEPs, we're legally required to provide services for them, so I mean, we just can't ignore the fact with the students. So I just wanted to clarify that I think you're doing a great job by identifying savings for us to outsource those types of services, so...
And that's correct. We have no choice in providing these services. What we can do, though, is provide direction for families in getting children into the services so that we're not only finding the best services for our students, but we're also trying to do it in a fiscally responsible way.
We've discussed a little bit also about the form that we use, that the board gets to see with the cost of the contract and details in terms of increases. I know we've appreciated seeing that, and I think, Erin, Mr. Sable, we've talked a little bit about maybe adding some more to that. So like in that case that you just mentioned, maybe there could be an additional line that says there were X number of students last year, this year there's, there were two last year, there's four this year. And then that might also help us with understanding if there's an increase, or maybe if there's a decrease at some point in time, it's because there were two students last year and there's only one this year. And that would maybe help the board understand that a little bit better as well. Thank you.
Number eight is another service agreement for the 1819 school year with extended school year services for the summer of 2019. Similar to the previous item, this is per individual student's learning plans, educational plans, and this is separated out because it's a different type of service. It's for extended school year, which is educational services over the summer. Number nine, we have a stipend payment. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the stipend payments, Ms. Laura Miller and Ms. Mandy Regler, in the amount of $160 each from the University of Akron for being cooperating teachers during the spring semester of 2018. And again, this stipend is not from the district, it's from the University of Akron. And number 10, the big part on our agenda. It is recommend that the following personnel recommendations are approved for the upcoming 2018-2019 school year. There are several things I would like to point out here. First of all, we have two new psychologist appointments on this agenda. Those are replacing individuals who left to take positions elsewhere, so those are not added positions. In addition, we have more supplemental contracts, such as the Girls Leaders Club Advisor for approval for the coming school year. These are all the same supplemental contracts that we've historically filled. We also have additional substitutes, performing arts center, special event workers. Again, this is all preparation for the upcoming school year. Substitutes on here, we want to keep the substitutes going. Substitute shortage has been a challenge, not just for us, but for school districts across Northeast Ohio. Just the availability of certified people to service substitutes has been a challenge, so it's good to see lots of names on the substitute list. Same situation for returning bus driver substitutes, a challenge to find permanent bus drivers, let alone subs, so it's good to see a nice list there. We do have a few administrator recommendations tonight as well. Before I get to that, I actually want to talk about teachers. We have several certificate appointments, and this list does have two or three names added to it from the original agenda that was posted. The reason why is because we did interviews today. We were actively doing interviews last week when this agenda was put together and even posted. None of these are new positions that are not already in the budget, so I thought it would be okay to add these on. They are either replacement of positions that have been left vacant, or they are filling positions as part of the strategic plan, either through adding more coursework, electives at the middle school and high school, or in many situations, it's actually because of kindergarten. For instance, you might see a third or fourth grade teacher hire. That's because one of our internal teachers already employed may have already moved or asked to be moved to teach kindergarten for the upcoming year, so it left their position vacant. I do want to mention that we are keeping a close eye on personnel. At the end of last week, we sent you the chart showing where we're at. Off the top of my head, I think we're actually down three staff members from where we had anticipated we would be at this time. And that includes the strategic plan additions as well as additions within the district. As recently as a week ago, myself, Jim Shields, and Chris Qualick, we sat down and we went through enrollment in all the grade levels. We are, per the strategic plan, being responsible with class sizes. We know that our parents and our community expect us to offer manageable class sizes, and we're doing that in a responsible way. And an example as to why we're still at negative three is because fourth grade across the district, we've had a decrease in enrollment. So we actually decreased position in fourth grade, and I know Jim spent quite a bit of time at the end of last week working with those teachers to decide who was going to transfer to another building and even potentially teach another grade level. transfer to another building and even potentially teach another grade level. The administrator appointments, the first one I would like to mention is Shannon Conley as Associate Principal at Claggett Middle School, effective August 1st, 2018, and she has her master's degree from the University of Toledo. Shannon has been with our school district for quite some time. She was a social studies teacher before becoming a teacher on assignment in our board office. Originally in the teacher on assignment position, she worked with technology and was a technology coach. Last year, she also served in that position, but we transitioned her to a curriculum coach when we made some of our adjustments over at the board office. This past school year, Shannon has been serving as an intern at Claggett. She's done an outstanding job over the course of this past school year in terms of building management. I think it's important that we have the opportunity to expand the impact she can have on that building, because she does have limitations, still being under a teacher contract, so I'm recommending that we place Shannon under an administrator contract. I do want to mention that based off of the salary she was making as a teacher, this comes at no increase to the school district, and she's actually going to have more flexibility in serving more hours over the course of a school day and also over the course of the school year. And I have no doubt her ultimate goal is to someday be a building principal, and this is the first step towards that process. The second recommendation is Mina Pizitka for Director of Pupil Services, effective August 1st, 2018. And Mina has her master's degree from Kent State University, and I do want to point out that Mina has joined us this evening. I would like to welcome Mina to our COAT team, so she will now officially be a member of our central office team, which means you all are going to get to know her much better than maybe you have in the past. She'll participate in our work sessions, as well as board retreats. You know, I think we're really fortunate to have Mina as a part of our district. You know, part of what the initiative I came in with was to bring some outside and varying perspectives as we move forward, and we get the best of both worlds with Mina. Mina originally joined us about a year and a half ago from Talmage, where she served as a school psychologist. She has been serving over the past year and a half as the Assistant Director of Pupil Services, so she's got the outside experience, but she also has been here long enough and working in the department to hit the ground running, which is important when you're talking about pupil services and special education. Over the course of the past three or four months, I've had the opportunity to work fairly close with Mina, and I can tell you I've been truly impressed with her ideas and with the leadership that I have no doubt she's going to provide within the department. Last week, we did post her position, the Assistant Director, so as she replaces Paul Kidd, because he's leaving, we will need to hire somebody to replace her. And hopefully, we'll get somebody as strong as she was in that position. Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's action items.
I'll second that.
Are there any comments or questions from the board regarding these items?
I just want to say thank you for going through and, you know, describing some of those things. It helps us, it helps others who are looking out there, and I just want to say, you know, congratulations and welcome to your next step.
Any comments or questions from the public? Roll, please. Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, we have public participation. We implement a new procedure for anyone intending to address the board to sign in. No one has, however, don't let that stop you from coming on up and addressing the board. I would like to point out that community members wishing to address the board are asked to abide by the following guidelines. Attendees shall, well, as we spoke about, register their intention. After those that have registered have spoken, if time allows, we will ask for additional public participation from any other attendees. State your name, address, and affiliation. Please keep comments to a maximum of three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Hearing no public comment, I would like to make a motion to move to executive session to consider the appointment, employment, compensation of a public employee or official.
Check it.
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood?
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik?
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore?
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes our meeting for this evening. We do not intend on taking any action when we return from executive session. I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Have a good night, and hopefully it stopped raining out there.